I'm not up at the 7:30.
You're going to be careful going to places.
Maybe 20:24.
No, because no one knows anything that's worth using.
I'll be sure.
It's only two bucks.
Club meeting in order. I'll please rise. I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. And please draw me to Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick, please take the roll.
Alderman Brennan.
Here.
Alderman Begley. Alderman Bassow.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
I am here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
All right, you have some special presentations, but also we're going to move those down a little bit, so let's go over the consent calendar. The approval of the city council meeting minutes from December 17th, 2024, the approval of payroll and voucher lists for the period ending January 3rd, 2025, and also a period of payroll for a period ending January 17th, 2025. Need a motion to approve the consent calendar. Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brennan, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
All right, that's that. No sealed bids. Under my report, first of all, I'd like to unfortunately accept the resignation of Alderman Jerry McGovern. As informed me the other day, he's going to do that, and so this is actually kind of his last meeting right now. Yep. And we do have a little bit of stuff for you, Jerry, if you've got a couple of minutes, I'd like to pass on a couple of little things. Come on up here.
All right. Sweets. Well deserved.
Jerry just says, "In appreciation for 14 years of outstanding service in the city of Palis Heights as Alderman of the fourth ward." Thank you, appreciate all your bid.
Thank you for my first appointment.
Yeah, well, not bad.
The first year I was here, you would appoint me after Art had left.
Right.
And I learned to pass it on.
In that lane vein, we're going to pass something on. This is, Art Phillips actually gave this to me when he left, and it was, I had it in my bookcase for a number of years, and it's a fitting from the water department, I assume, something like that. Some of your public works guys may recognize this. And inside of it says, there's a badge, it says Alderman, City of Palis Heights. So that's, fits for you to have.
Thank you. That adds to a heck of a collection of stars that I have.
You've got a whole bunch of stars in your career, and now you've got another one. Want to say a few words?
I got one from the city, I got one from Chicago, one from the county, and now I got one from here.
Well, very good.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure having you with us all those years, and you'll be sorely missed, and come around anytime, as you know.
You know, Darren, well, this is just, we're lucky out here, because you, him, him, her, him, him, especially him, her and him, this is double special. But they've all, you've always came together as like a one good, solid team. And everybody out here just kind of works together, and you create a fun place to be. It really is. You call on the phone and information just comes right out without a problem. And that's you doing it.
Well, thank you. It's a two-way street, everyone works together, that's the whole idea.
Well, that's the whole idea. But you're the guy on top that gets the benefits.
Thank you.
We'll see.
All right, Jerry.
All right, good night. Thank you, Jerry.
Take my seat for about 10 seconds.
Mr. Mayor, before Jerry leaves, we go back a long time, we both served in the same branch, and so I'd just like to say to him that he forgot to ask permission to go ashore. And that is granted, and bon voyage in your next ship, your next portico, your next duty station. So with that, it was a pleasure, and I know Jerry for all the years since grammar school, high school, and service and everything else, and he's quite a guy, and his brother-in-law and his whole McGovern family. I'd just like to wish him the best in his future endeavors, and I'd like to thank him for having his service to his country and his service to the city of Palis Heights.
You know, for 14 years, I've had a publicist, and he's been sitting right next to me for 14 years, every night of the week. Somewhere along the line, a couple of years ago, he decided to get in touch with my wife, and they turned around and found an old picture of me from Vietnam, and the next thing you know was Veterans Day, and the mayor decided to give it to me at a Veterans Day presentation. And it is really, really a pleasure to be among everybody in this place, and I'll continue to say it until I have to give up the chair to him.
Well, he's being modest. That little picture was like the cover of Life or Look magazine?
No, really, and truthfully, it was page 57, but I'm not going to get that. October 66, of which, which we found, that's my wife sitting over there, by the way, Carolyn, and, but we found what, in Indiana, didn't we find the original that we have of Life magazine? Somewhere out in southern, southern Indiana. And then John Hanley found another copy of it for me, and he gave me a second copy of it. So, but, yeah, I've been, I've been blessed, I've been blessed, it's very lucky. Truth of reality is, when I did go to Vietnam, I was as a battalion landing team for our unit, and from our platoon of 41, I knew there were 41 of us that landed. The day I left, there were five of us. We really took some hits. And last week, last week Lynn and I were over down at Camp Pendleton, one of my little leaguers actually retired from Marine Corps, and he ended up, he just ended up a colonel, that's all. And he invited us to go, to go down to Camp Pendleton for his retirement party, so we had a wonderful five days together out there and just enjoyed ourselves, and learned how to, not to, we learned how to stink at darts.
Great, Jerry.
But thank you.
That's one quick note on the picture. I don't know if you can see that, but that's the picture that I had made up after me and Lynn conspired to do this, and he didn't know, but a friend of mine put it together, and what it says on there, it's purple heart distinguished on the one side, October 1966, 2nd Battalion, 5th Marines, Sergeant Cherry McGovern. And the picture I have is, 18, 19?
I was 18.
18 years old, Otto M. Carmel, riding point, and there's 1, 2, 3, 4, well, the whole squad or platoons behind him, he's up in front with the M-14, riding point, which everyone knows is a very precarious position to be in. But in the background, those mountains, there's North Vietnam, that's how close they were. So when I seen this, I got the brainstorm, well, maybe I'll do this for him, and with the mayor's consent and everybody else, we did that, we presented to him, and I think it was well deserved.
Sitting next to a hero.
Mr. Mayor, if I can real quick, I just want to say a sincere thank you for everything I've learned from you, Alderman McGovern, and I'm sitting here, I'm listening to everything, a lifetime of public service, you know, from the Marine Corps serving our nation, Chicago Police Department serving the city of Chicago, and now, you know, retirement from here, serving our city of Palis Heights. Your community's got smaller that you served, right? The nation, the city, and now Palis Heights. But, but your impact has always been the same, and I just want to say thank you for everything you've taught me, and it's an honor to serve with you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Great. Moving right along, at this point, we have to find someone to try to fit those shoes, and Pat, this is going to be kind of rough, I know, but, but I look for a motion to approve my appointment of Pat Scully to fill the vacancy in the Ward 4 for the remaining of the term. Someone move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Definitely.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
All right, so we'll swear to our new business, just stick around. All right, keeping in line of retirements, we have the honor tonight of having with us Patrick Schramm. Pat retired two weeks ago, week and a half ago now, after 38 years of service to the city of Palis Heights. So Pat, would you like to kind of come up here? Pat is in Public Works for, did a little bit, when did you start it, how did you start?
Well, I started the summer of, when I was 16, cutting grass.
Okay.
Worked for a couple summers, stayed working on when I was going to Marine, and just kind of fell into the position and became full-time, and became my career.
Okay.
A wonderful career it was.
And a great, great job you did, too.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
I think one of the most appreciated things that I see from Pat after he retires, where does he move? He moves into Palis Heights.
That's right. I've either lived here or worked here my whole life, and now I'm continuing that going.
Great.
Yeah.
What we've got here is a plaque for Pat Schramm for appreciation of 38 years of outstanding service to the residents of Palis Heights.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Pat.
Thank you, everybody.
Great job, thanks a lot. Pat was always around in Public Works, you guys know how hard they work, and anytime, day or night, I'm sure, you don't miss the snow right now, right, Pat? Or the cold?
No, it was cold weather.
Yeah, and the cold out there, and everything like that. All right, moving right along, it's been a while since we've been here, we missed, because of the holidays, but would like to cover a couple of things. Last month, we received our first share of the winnings from, somebody's winnings, somebody's winnings, like that. Wind Creek Casino, we received a check for 70, a little over $7,100, which represents November's income. Now, that was three weeks, again, now that was the first, the grand opening, so there's only three weeks of income, but Tom has said, probably this month, we're going to get $7,800. $7,800. So looking forward to it on a monthly basis, getting that income starting, starting now, so they're starting to roll in. And then on the police side, they are beneficiary of a $9,000 grant from Commonwealth Edison, and this was put towards the purchase of a 2023 Tesla that we bought last year. This was a EV kind of grant that was put out there by Commonwealth Edison, they're part of the Southwest Conference of Mayors, and from time to time come up with grants that are available for us to use, so we were fortunate to get that. And then lastly, through the Metropolitan, let's see, Metropolitan Agency for Planning, we were able to have Applied Research Associates do a digital laser scan of all the streets in the city of Palis Heights. And this is kind of on our ongoing road maintenance program, and they went through and actually documented every street from good to bad, and what has to be replaced, and we've replaced some of them, and the ones we actually, it's kind of ironic, the ones we have scheduled to go into our road program this year were actually the ones they rated as the lowest ones. Now, we, you know, this cost us $4,000, and that was because, because the grant we got, the actual cost would have been somewhere in the area of $60,000 if we didn't get the grant. So we saved about 50 grand by doing, by using the CMAP. And again, those are kind of things that kind of, from time to time, so. Other than that, that's it. City Clerk, you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report tonight.
City Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Alderman McGovern for everything, you know, since I started, he's been on finance, and he's always been, he's always taken the call, and he's just a great steward for the residents, and he's served us very well over the years. So I learned a lot from you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
With that, we're getting caught up on the Treasurer's report, this is for November 2024. The general fund began the month with $6,450,978. Revenues were $855,765. Expenses from the general fund were $1,65,100. Other source use, $25,164, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of $6,266,807. Total of all city funds began November with $32,330,307. Revenues were $1,764,501. Expenses were $4,403,105. Other source use, $62,150, giving an ending cash balance in all city funds of $29,629,553. That concludes my part of this matter.
With that, entertain a motion to approve the Treasurer's report. Some vote. Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman McGrogan, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Attorney.
No report.
Anyone have any communication this evening? All right, citizens wishing to ask any questions, address the council, anybody?
Harlan, I voted 7640 West 135th Street. I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, I'd like to welcome my new Alderman. I recently read an article in the Regional about Alderman Key's running for mayor, and I read in the article, there are certain things that he's running on, and whatever the case be, and I read the Regional that Mayor Straz is running for reelection. I noticed we have a new, you know, as we all know, we got Dan Brennan as a new Alderman, we have another new Alderman here that's going to be taken, a fine man who's done a fabulous job over there. I just would like to remind everybody here, the people, there aren't a lot of people in this town that are hurting right now. And all the words that I've been hearing in a year and a half that I've been coming to city councils again, when since I started up again, have been raise, increase. I've seen money being voted on and spent very, very foolishly. I looked at a, I've seen the city pay $20,000 for a $5,000 paint job at the, at the train station. I've seen the city of Palis Heights pay money for landscaping, thousands of dollars for landscaping, only to rip it out because they're going to change the pool. I've seen the city of Palis Heights pay, paying for treating the grass, a big contract, when we used to do that in-house. When the mayor first got elected, we didn't have any money in our accounts, and we were very, very, very frugal. Now we got $30,000 thanks to, we got a very good city treasurer who's investing our money wisely and doing a great job, and I want to commend you for that. Well, now you have $30 million, but I don't want it to go to everybody's head. There used to be a time when Alderman Bassow, Alderman Jack Clifford, Alderman Alan Falkerson, Dolores Kromarski, they used to question when people wanted to spend money, enlarge sums of money on things. The people who are given money back are the city of Crestwood, Crestwood recently bought our used vehicles that, after we bought new vehicles. I don't know if you realize this, Alderman Bassow's the one who started the city Palis Heights city sticker, but nowadays, people have four or five cars in their driveways. It's, it's quite an expense to have four or five city stickers. The city of Orland Park no longer has a city sticker because they canceled theirs. They don't charge people for city stickers anymore in city of Palis Park. I looked up our tax rate, we used to be one of the lowest tax rates in the southwest community, and now we're one of the higher ones.
That's not true.
Well, we're hired in Orland Park, and we're hired in Palis Park, the tax levy. I looked it up.
The total levy?
No, no, I'm talking about the percentage.
Okay.
Tax rate. So, you know, I'll put it in very easy layman terms. I live in a house that is paid for, I have no mortgage on it, okay, but yet it costs me between the taxes and the insurance, not including water, not including anything else, close to $1,700 a month, to live in a house that is paid for. And that's because my city of Palis Heights, when I used to pay $200 to the Palis Heights on my tax bill, now I pay $2,600. So it has, it has, just remember, there's people, I'm still employed, but there are people who are retired who have fixed incomes and don't really have that kind of money. And, and I need for us, since we have a new Alderman, another new Alderman, and we used to have guys that used to fight for us, you know, you guys recently raised our sewer fee by 50%, by 50%. And then only, less than a half a year later, maybe a half a year later, you raise it by another 3%, and Alderman McGrogan's thing says, well, it's just a pass-on fee. So you mean to tell me out of the 50% that you raised it, you could not have just absorbed that 3%? You're nickelin' and diming us. And, and it's getting, it's getting to where it's getting very difficult. And I'm hoping for whichever one of you wins the election, that we go back to watching our nickels and don't just spend our $30 million, put some of it in a rainy day fund and live off the interest. We're just, you know, we're getting a little bit goofy here with some of the things that I see us spending money on, with that we never used to spend money on like that before. So just a little comment, something that I was thinking about after reading everybody's article and researching a little bit. And if I'm wrong, I apologize, Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Finance Committee?
Alderman McGrogan.
Number 12 on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is a motion to approve the Palis Heights Police Officer Educational Assistant Program, which is intended to be for qualified educational assistant programs under Section 127 of the Internal Revenue Code.
Move by Alderman McGrogan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this just, it helps getting a certain type of tax treatment, and it's, you know, well deserved, I'm sure the chief's here if you wanted anybody to talk, but I think it makes sense.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, just one other thing, as others have pointed out, I just wanted to congratulate Jerry, my right-hand man here, he's been on the Finance Committee, Ward and Sewer, some of these committees I've been on for 20-some years, Jerry's been in there, like you said, 14, and as Brent and other Aldermen have pointed out, he's done a great job. He does a lot of research, he was nice enough before he left to give me all his files, which I think have created a bad, bad problem for me, because he does a lot of research on every issue that we've talked about. And I think all of us know that when you're here, it's not just, you know, that he just like says yes and no, or yea and nay. I think, Jerry, it's, I've learned a lot from you, too, just on the research that you did, and I think one of the things Brent, we failed to mention, I didn't know this either, but I think we forgot to say that he's also a teacher. And so, you know, I really, we're going to miss you on all the committees.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's it.
Public Safety, Alderman Bassow.
Yes, Mayor, I have two items on the agenda this evening. Number 13, motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 35.06, Paragraph A, increasing the number of authorized full-time police officers to 29 full-time police officers.
Move by Alderman Bassow, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Item number 14, motion to approve a joint task force agreement between the city of Palis Heights and the Suburban Emergency Response Team, S.S.E.R.T. This is just a switch of venue, if anyone has any questions on that, Chief Chikowsky is here this evening to answer those.
Okay, move by Alderman Bassow, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Not on the agenda, but a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Recently, in the Chicago Tribune, there was a report issued by, I always want to do this with the newspaper, but it doesn't work, you know, excuse me one minute, by the Identity Theft Resource Center, which has done research on cyber crimes. And it gives you the good news, not so much, that cybercrime is expected to increase tremendously in the coming years because of the advances in artificial intelligence. Artificial intelligence, cyber criminals are putting out actual calls for help because they need so much help while issuing their scams, trying to catch people in scams. There are several reasons for that, and several predictions that make that possible, and one is that there's an anticipated lessening of support for government and law enforcement agencies to tackle cybercrime, there's less money for identity theft crime victims, and federal regulations will take a backseat to state regulations, and then returning other states to self-regulating will cause more confusion and chaos between the criminals and the courts, trying to figure out who takes precedent over which laws. So again, it's a warning for everyone to be alert for any scams, especially those that hit us on the telephone and through our internet, our telephone and our computers, et cetera, et cetera, you can't be warned enough. We keep reading in the newspaper about people getting scammed by the same scams that everybody knows about, not specifically new ones. And we have to remind us elder folks about the scams that come across the telephone. Number one is it's tax time, and you're going to start getting phone calls from people suggesting that the IRS agents, and they're going to come to your house, they're going to find you, they want payment with gift cards, et cetera, et cetera. Please be aware again and again and again that those are scam calls. I read in the newspaper or on the patch that someone was scammed out of $10,000 with a Bitcoin scam just recently, a couple of weeks ago. Also, our police chief would like us to remind everyone to lock their tool sheds, something that is, sounds inconvenient and probably is, especially in the summertime, one more thing to do, lock and unlock your shed every time you go for a rake, but recently in Palis Heights, four motorcycles were stolen from an unlocked shed. So it's an alert to everybody to be consciously aware all the time. I can't emphasize that enough, and on top of all that good news, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and please stay unscammed if you can. Thank you.
Good word, no scheme.
I'll look at it.
Okay, Alderman Begley, Municipal Grounds and Property.
Thank you, Mayor, I actually have no items on my report this evening from Municipal Grounds and Property, but I also just wanted to echo everyone's sentiment. Congratulations, Alderman McGovern, congratulations, Pat, thanks for all your hard work, and congratulations on retirement.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, planning and zoning, you can't give a report since you're not in office anymore, but I assume there's nothing, so we'll move on to Alderman Key on recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I'd like to make a motion to approve payment number five to Simpson Construction in the amount of $191,861 and 10 cents for work completed on the pool improvement project.
Move by Alderman Key, is there a second? By Alderman Clifford, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to Dell Software in the amount of $15,679 and 77 cents for a new Power Edge R760 XS Rack Server for the Recreation Department.
Move by Alderman Key, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brennan, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.[1763.13]
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to Vermont Systems in the amount of $8760 and 0 cents for VSI Cloud hosting services.
Move by Alderman Key, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes. And then I'd like to make a motion to direct attorney to, a city attorney to create an ordinance declaring the following vehicle a surplus and sell the 2002 Ford E-Series Silver Van, Van IFB SS3 IL-92HA99617.
Second.
Did that really well.
Really.
You have to practice that.
Move by Alderman Keys, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go into construction. Alderman Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to adopt an 90 resolution to utilize NFT funds and rebuild Illinois funds for salt deliveries, roadway resurfacing, Harold Avenue reconstruction, stormwater improvement, and Cypress Avenue reconstruction in the amount of $947,510.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
And that's all part of what you mentioned earlier about the street reconstruction in the city, some major projects over on Cypress Avenue over there, repaving, reconstructing the street. There's a big water issue over there. We recommend, took care of it along with the cooperation with the NWRD. Next is the motion to approve solicit bids for the Harold Avenue drainage improvements and the Cypress Avenue reconstruction.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And last, motion to approve payment to Morris Engineering for engineering services of various projects throughout the city in the amount of $14,337.75.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes. And other than that, it's just thanks to our public works director and our staff to putting this plan together for the city and the roads and categorizing them. The report can act pretty generous. I mean, pretty, you would think, I have a look in that picture here of what's in red and there isn't a lot of red, which are the bad streets, but we've also decided to do the bad ones first because it'll just cost more to us later and get those done. So there's going to be some, quite a bit of work going on this summer with those extra funds that will build real Illinois and some from the federal government, hopefully. But I'd like to thank Mayor and Adam for sitting down with that company and getting this program moving. Thank you.
You're welcome.
End of my report.
All right. License and permits to franchises, Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report.
Okay. Alderman Brennan, Water and Sewer.
Yeah, number 23, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance providing for a 3.5% water and sewer rate increase effective January 1, 2025.
Move by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Key. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recommend and propose an additional slight amendment, just adding on after the word, or after January 1, 2025, with all sewer and water assessed usage billed at the end of the first quarter of 2025.
In other words, it's, it's a little vague on that, so when do we actually bill it? It's assessed, the 3.5% goes in, we're not affecting that, but it doesn't say how it's calculated. I had some discussions today with the city and also with some of the aldermen. And I think to be further clarify it, it's effective January 1 and then billed at the end of the first quarter of 2025.
So the usage beginning January 1, you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
Well, when you're, like, from people, everybody in this room, we're using our water every day, so from, from this point on.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
From January 1 through March 30, we would then be charged and billed at that point.
Yeah, so the usage beginning January 1.
Yes. Because it was a little unclear based on discussions today where they thought it might, based on the first billing, which it's kind of technical, but would go back to October, November and December of.
At yield rate.
Of 2023, or 2024, because we sent the bills out just recently. So the first billing would have been based on the last quarter of last year, where this makes it.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? It's just based on, we're lining up the apples with the apples. We're charging it and you get charged in the first quarter.
Yeah.
It's, it's just technical, but it'll, it'll give the people in the city a better understanding of how they're actually calculating it.
Mike, I think you're technically being charged from January 1, though. So you're saying that the bill would come out after the first quarter?
Well, we, we bill in the rears. So, like, what I'm saying is, like, the way it looks on the bills that just went out, if you take a look at your bills, like, the billing, the effective raise, which we're approving tonight, actually was assessed going into the last quarter of last year. And that's not the intent with the people when we were voting at this, at Sewer and Water, that was like, we thought that, you know, was the next billing cycle, which was 2025, which is now. So there's no question that, as Harlan pointed out, we're trying to pass along the, the water charge that we get from ALSIP into this calendar year, which is what this motion says. We're just clarifying when they actually have to start paying, which will be in the center of the quarters.
Yes.
Right.
I agree.
Okay.
Is that, do you mean, are you reading them too?
That's right. So we get charged in the first quarter, for the first quarter's rates as opposed to the fourth quarter of last year.
Okay.
Yeah. And if Dan had accepted the motion, I think it's, you know, as a member of the Finance Committee, I think it's perfect.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
I have a water bill dated for the last quarter, 2024, and I think this is the first time I noticed this new format of information on the back of the water bill. I look back at a couple of other bills and I, I see the other format. On the back of this new bill, it tells you how to pay your utility bill, it gives you instructions on your senior citizen discount, how to apply for that. It tells you what water-saving tips are and it tells you when the late fee kicks in. It also suggests that you go to, again, paylessheights.org to find out the current rate information. It took me, I was on the Water Committee for about 15 years, I think, or more, and it took me much of that time to try to get information printed on the back of this water bill that tells you how to read your water bill and how to determine how much you're paying for water and what percentage you get for a discount if in fact you get it, or how the gallon, how the gallon is just calculated, how, how the, how the charges are calculated. And suddenly that's gone again. I just wonder if that's coming back or, you know, is the 3.5% going to be explained on the back of a water bill in the future when it comes out? I, I can guarantee that most people don't know how to read this water bill. I'm, I'm pretty disappointed that that was changed. From what I'm understanding, it didn't, this change didn't come through committee, it's just.
I didn't, I didn't know that it changed, to tell you the truth. It changed recently, just this bill?
I think this is the first time I, I've noticed it.
Mayor, I, I brought mine just in case there was a question on what I just discussed. I don't have anything on the back of mine. I brought it as an exhibit, you know, and I get, I actually have the one from September, you know, and I don't know, maybe we're, I don't know. Adam, are we doing, are we putting these things, the explanations on the back?
Yeah, that comes out of the building department. We'll look into it, give an explanation. And I don't know why you don't have, you have too much to consider.
This came out of committee back in October, wasn't it, or November, the discussion about the 3.5.
Well, 3.5 was passed in December.
Yeah, in summer.
And that's a pass, so I get this, from Chicago to ALSIP and ALSIP for mechanical needs and improvements, and that 3.5 covers some of that and that comes to us, correct?
Right.
That's the chain of events.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no way to lower those or absorb any? Would it be?
We did last year. We took it.
Pardon?
We absorbed it last year, that's why.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not sure, but before we vote on the amendment, I'm not sure anybody seconded it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need, we need, roll call.
And this is on the amendment with the, okay?
On the motion with the amendment, yeah.
Okay. Alderman Bassel. Alderman Lewandowski. Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve soliciting bids for the 131st Street Water Main Mining Project.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, point of order.